All right, it is six thirty. We'll call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. We'll start with the call of order and the termination of the quorum. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, we have six present and one absent, so we do have a quorum.
All right, thank you. We'll rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll begin with the approval of the agenda. I have a couple of suggested changes to the ordering. We have a couple of positions that are being filled this evening. Items ten B and items ten C. English language coordinator and the integration grant coordinator. And so my suggestion is that we will, those two people will be here this evening and my suggestion is we move those up earlier in the agenda for their sake. So I was going to suggest that we place items ten B and ten C immediately after the consent agenda and before curriculum. So that is my suggested change. I will entertain a motion at this time to accept the agenda as suggested.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have no recognition and awards this evening, so we come right up to community comment. This is a time for any members of the community to come forward and speak to the board on any comments or concerns they have about the district. I think I recognize all the faces, but I'm gonna be patient and wait anyway in case there's anyone who wants to come forward. All right, seeing none, we'll move along with the agenda. Next is the consent agenda. There, this, these are items that are approved without discussion and any board member can suggest removing any of the actions for separate action. Are there any items anyone would like removed for separate action? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. This item requires a roll call on Mr. Clerk.
I will vote yes. Deb Davis?
Yes.
Yvette Martholler?
I abstain.
Richard Olson?
Yes.
Cherry Robashow?
Yes.
And Chairman Ingraham?
Yes. I will note that you wrote down a yes for Yvette, but in fact she abstained.
I was just gonna ask.
She needed to abstain this evening.
So I will make that notice.
That was important, so we'll make sure it gets recorded.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have five in favor and one abstention.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. All right, so that brings us then to item ten B. Consider approval of the employment agreement for the English language coordinator. Mr. Sesker, if you would please do the introduction and.
I will. We have with us Sam Oak. Come on up, Sam. I'm sure they're gonna be asking you some questions anyways, we're not gonna grill you by any means. But we're very pleased to have Sam take over as, actually start as our coordinator for our English language learner programs. And Sam comes from Rochester and we're very pleased that he has accepted the position for us. And I'll just introduce you to Sam. So if you guys have any questions, go ahead and fire away.
Would you mind taking just a couple of minutes to tell us about yourself?
Sure.
Maybe not even a couple of minutes, a couple of sentences.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever works for you.
I, I, I was pretending to open that. Just trying to look professional. But I just wanna let you guys know I am very excited to be here. As a former EL learner myself, a former refugee, I take the achievement and success of EL students to heart. So I really, you know, it's not every day that, that one person can, can come in here and have the opportunity to develop a program and help run a program here in Fairbowl. So I am really honored and humbled that you guys have selected me to do this. And I promise you that I'll put my best foot forward, put in extra time and work the hardest I can to help make the Fairbowl EL program a model program for the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Very much.
Nice to meet you, Sam.
Absolutely, I couldn't add to that. Without any further ado.
I would just add, Mr. Chairman, that Sam presented at a, at a fair that we had last spring at the high school. And then I had the opportunity to go down and visit his program in Rochester and it was amazing. He has a great newcomers program. So I'm really excited that we were able to hire him here at Fairbowl. I think it's a great opportunity for us.
So I have a curious question.
Yes.
Being a refugee and an EL learner yourself, I'm curious about what you've learned about what applies to the position you're in now.
Well, I've learned that the American dream is very real. And I know that with the economy being bad and everything, that started to waver a little bit. But my family, myself, I, I really feel like, you know, that dream is still possible. For an EL learner, I think we have to remember that, you know, just getting off a plane and arriving in America here doesn't mean that you've actually arrived. There's still that cultural barrier, that language barrier that we have to cross. And I think the best thing that the EL program can do is to build that bridge. It helps students cross that bridge to achieve that dream that we've set forward here.
Thank you.
What, what's your, what's your definition of a newcomers program?
Well, Rochester definition of a newcomers program is that the kids are new to the country, have not been here less than a year, have not been here more than a year. And also they've tested to the lowest level EL, which is zero to very low English ability. So we do give that placement test and if they qualify, then we, we do put them into our newcomer program. And a newcomer program is an all-day English immersion program. And then after that all-day English immersion program, we go to the lowest level, the lower levels of EL, EL, which is thirty to forty-five minute self-contained EL classes to help further their English ability. And then once they reach the higher levels of EL, then we would push the EL teachers into the general classroom and do more co-taught lessons there, all the way on up till we monitor and coach general ed teachers to be successful EL teachers themselves.
Great.
All right, well, thank you very much, Sam.
You're welcome.
You may be seated. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve item ten B. Consider approval of the employment agreement for the English language coordinator.
Second.
Motion and a second. My understanding of the agenda is that this needs a roll call? Is that correct?
It's, it's an approval for just a position. It does not need a roll call, but you're certainly.
Yeah, I didn't know what the R was on there.
No.
So, okay, so I don't think it needs a roll call, okay. So any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, item ten C. The employment agreement for the integration grant coordinator. Again, we have someone with us, so, Mr. Sesker, if you'd like to do the introduction.
Yeah, we do operate with an integration grant, which is a large amount of money. One of the programs that we have through that integration grant is called Abbott. Among other things, there's a lot of other components of it, but that's kind of the main component. And Cheryl Curry, if you remember, was running that program before and she is going to retire this year. And as a result of her retirement, we've decided to hire Heidi Onis for that position. And Heidi is in the back row. She's one of our outstanding teachers in the classroom, so she's now going to help us out with our integration grant.
So Heidi is not new to the district, but is new to this position.
I told her that. You'd tell her to come up and introduce herself.
So Heidi, would you mind, while she's sat back there, I think she was hoping that wouldn't happen.
Hi, I'm Heidi. I've been with Fairbowl for about thirteen years now. I did my student teaching here thirteen years ago last fall and have been here ever since. So I've really looked forward to continuing my journey here with the staff and students at Fairbowl. Been home for a long time and had some of their students, I think, too, over the years. But I'm excited for the new position. Cheryl's been a great role model and mentor for me. So I feel confident that I can hopefully carry on all her good work with the programs that are under the grant.
Any questions?
So there's been some cross-training or not cross, you not stepping in cold.
Right.
Cheryl's been working.
Yep. Yep, and she's been through all the training. In fact, I went to a national conference with Heidi down in Orlando.
Yeah, since the beginning of the Abbott program, I've been working with her nonstop.
All right. Any other questions or thoughts? All right, thank you, Heidi. With that then, I will entertain a motion to approve the employment agreement for the integration grant coordinator.
So.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Okay, we'll go back to our ordinary order for the meeting, which brings us to item six, curriculum, beginning with a curriculum committee report from Colleen Craynoodle, who I actually do not see.
She's not here.
She is not, no, she could not make it.
Okay.
In the last curriculum committee.
I suppose Tom and Jason.
Tom is out there, yeah.
Tom's out there. I was there.
Oh, Jason's there.
Yeah, I'm on, thank you for remembering I'm on that committee.
I can remember it's Tom.
Are there minutes in here to remind me?
Yes.
What, what was on there? Yeah, excellent. Yeah, so the curriculum committee, I think. Am I looking at the right, no, that's not, those are the minutes for something else.
I think we could.
Yeah, so, okay, so the, the curriculum committee had some updates from the technology department on the motion of that. But we spent the bulk of our time discussing an item that we'll talk about later, which is the request from the high school for FTE there. And, and yeah, the finance committee, we approved that and asked the finance committee to look at it as well. And so that'll be talked about a couple more times before approval. So those will be major discussion points. Unless there's any questions, I guess we'll move along. Technology update, that was probably also going to be.
It's clean and re, neither one of them are.
So I'm not gonna attempt to fill in.
Yes.
All right, we'll move along then to the policy committee. There was no policy committee meeting this past month, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so we have a number of items in front of us for second reading and our approval this evening. For those who might be watching at home, these items came to the board last month for a first reading and discussion. And this evening, they come back to us for further discussion and perhaps approval this evening as well. So we have five policies in front of us. I will entertain a motion to approve all five policies and then we can have discussion on, on any of them that we would like. So I'll read those aloud for, for those who might be watching. Policy five thirty-four, the delinquent meal account policy. Policy seven oh five, investments. Policy seven oh seven, transportation of public school students. Policy six twelve point two, education of homeless students. Policy five sixteen, student medication. These act, these items are in front of us this evening for action. I'll entertain a motion at, at this time to approve those named policies.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion on any one of these?
I'd like to talk about two policy. One, investments. I think Colleen had some information for us on investments. The policy of.
Yep. What you see there are the changes.
Okay, then, and then with the local banks or was that? Because we talked about finance, they get more local bank involvement?
Yes. What, what we will plan to do after the investment policy is approved is then reach out to local banks and ask them to gauge or let us know if they're interested in providing quotes on investment opportunities that we will have available for them. And they'll have to abide by the investment policy. So we want to make sure that they have that in their hands before they make that decision.
Okay, so all banks, big, small?
Every bank in Fairbowl. Bank, credit union, whatever, any, anyone that can abide by the investment policy is welcome to get on the list for investment opportunities.
All right, any, any further, let's stay on this, this one until we know that there's any, any conversation. Any further conversation in policy seven oh five, investments? Hearing none, any other policies? Richard, do you have another policy?
Yeah, the, the policy five thirty-four, delinquent meal account, where it's, I think we're changing it where everybody gets a meal without paying, but I, I, I think we're taking responsibility away from the parents with that. So they could abuse this. I know we'd be monitoring, I think Mr. Sesker is saying we'll monitor it with the sudesco. It, that, but it opens up the door where parents of students can abuse this. And I'm just saying, where's the responsibility in this policy of them paying? That's, you know, I think we're taking that factor away on this policy. Theoretically, they could eat and we still have to feed them. Is that the full meal or is that a peanut butter sandwich?
Well, the elementary, well, K eight, we would still provide them with a hot lunch and then the idea would be to counsel with parents to get them, if they're not on the free introduced lunch package, to make sure they pay up and do the follow-up. And then nine through twelve, there'd be a point when we would then give them a cold lunch and then again consult with the parents to try to get the parents to pay for their lunches. That was the, the big difference, so we cut it off at eighth grade.
I think that's a fair point, Richard. It's not a point I want to change in the policy, but I do think it's a point that requires us to, to monitor. As you, as you mentioned, it would be nice to have an annual report about how that, when the food service has to give us a report each year anyway. It would be nice as a part of that report to, to hear how those account balances are doing, what the cost has been to the district for delinquent accounts. And also to hear at that time, perhaps, what the, how successful procedures have been to try and bring those accounts into, into a good standing when they go negative as well.
Is that public information?
It is if you leave the names. Yeah, you can't, you can't put the names in.
So the amounts.
Yeah, and this is, of course, one of, yeah, my interest would be in hearing about amounts and generalities about it. Clearly, we don't want. I have my children in it.
The policy doesn't say we're not gonna try to collect that money or to hold parents accountable. We're still doing that. In fact, they have some new things that they've been working with, the, the food service account that you can pay online and things like of that nature and sending, you know, written notices home to the school age kid, the K through eight and stuff like that, that, that we didn't take out of the policy. It's just children shouldn't be, you know, denied food because their parents aren't paying their bills in the public school district. And that all is addressing the Michelle Obama acts of, of food service. So we did talk about that.
I think the, the good news about this policy though is that we won't have kids eighth grade and down being hungry in school and not having meals because of not being able to pay or parents forgetting to pay or whatever. So kids won't sit there and then not be able to eat. And I don't think we want to go down that path.
I agree, and those are the concerns. And that's the balance. I mean, I feel like this is one of those sorts of things that puts school boards and districts in very difficult positions of trying to choose how to balance between making sure kids are getting a good lunch during the school day and trying to make sure that they're being physically responsible. That's a very difficult thing in this particular case to balance. And so I think personally, I'm okay with this balance at the moment and I'll want to hear updates about it to see how it's going. And we'll learn from that process.
When does this take effect? Immediate or the next school year? How does that work?
Well, we've been really doing this already with the elementary students. We haven't denied them any sort of a hot lunch. And the high school students who've been given the cold lunch and consulting the parents and paying. The only thing that really has changed is we've actually written it in policy. So we're really practicing what we're doing right now. So hopefully, we'll be able to, like Deb said, with some of the improvements, we'll be able to improve the relationship with parents and hopefully be able to make sure that they're not, making sure that they are paying their bills on time and things like that. But it's really kind of paralleling what we're already doing. We're really not, to my knowledge anyways, Colleen, we haven't denied any elementary kids a hot lunch all year, this year anyways.
Any further discussion on this policy item? Any discussion on any other policy items?
What did we change on transportation? Anybody remember that?
The transportation policy, we really didn't have a transportation policy begin with. So it was more of a boiler for the MSBA piece. Or we, the revision parallels more of what we've had, right?
We did have.
Oh, what, oh, no, I'm thinking of homeless, sorry.
Yeah, seven, yeah.
So the transportation just did what. Yeah, I think it was just statutory requirements in the language that we had from MSBA. So the boilers parallel. And I think, I think we had to have a transportation policy that included the homeless as well. Yeah, we add that in there. So we did have that. Yep, is added.
So that got added.
Yep.
Any further questions about any of the policies in front of us? Richard, you expressed trepidation about one of the policies and at this moment, we have a motion in front of us to accept them all at one time. Would you want to make an amendment to remove any of those policies from the motion?
No, no, just like just go with.
I just wanted to make sure that you felt, you have the ability to express your opinion as you wanted to. All right, is there any further discussion on any of these policies? All right, yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve five policies. I'll read them again for anybody who might be watching. They are policy five thirty-four, the delinquent meal account. Policy seven oh five, investments. Policy seven oh seven, transportation of public school students. Policy six twelve point two, education of homeless students. Policy five sixteen, student medication. If there are no further comments at this time, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you all. Next up, we have four policies to rescind in light of the policies we just adopted. So those policies carry, and they're all the same numbers, so, so let me read them. The old policies are policy five thirty-four, the delinquent family meal account adopted eight seventeen, two thousand nine. Policy eight oh two point six, investments, that was adopted eight twenty-four ninety-eight. Policy seven oh seven, transportation of public school students adopted two twenty-seven, two thousand twelve. Policy five oh four point five, administering medication in school adopted nine twenty-five, two thousand six. So each of these policies has just been replaced and therefore these need to be rescinded. Any, I'll entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on these rescissions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you all. We are now to item eight in the agenda, finance, which brings us to the finance committee report. Madam Treasurer, would you like to share that report from this morning with us?
We met this morning for a nice lengthy meeting, very informative. And most of the items discussed are coming in front of the board to review. I guess I would just add, we also get an update about the hires with the levy addition. So we've been making progress adding those positions that we are able to add because of the levy passing, so that's exciting. Obviously, we approved one of those positions tonight. But I think in the majority, if I'm missing anything, China, we're gonna be discussing further.
Well, the summer band camp and summer orchestra, that took a long, that was a long discussion. Everything else was pretty. Everything else was. That took a long, long time.
So we will be going over that further in the agenda.
Excellent. Let me make a note here while we're discussing that.
Are you looking for the summer?
Yep.
Top of the page.
Top of the second page.
Yeah.
That's what I was, I just wanted to see that. All right, thank you all for your patience. So that'll bring us to item eight B. Items reviewed by the finance committee and recommended for board approval as of this morning. There are a number of project bids for approval. They include District Ride Hardware Upgrade and Rekeying Project, the Lincoln Elementary School Cooler and Freezer Edition and Jefferson Elementary School Asbestos Removal. I'll entertain a motion to approve those three items and then we can discuss them.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Somebody out in the committee say second.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve. We're in trouble with seconds tonight. Normally, it's a, it's a light for the seconds.
I was reading.
It's good for the committee to have a second.
All right. Okay, so discussion on this item?
Well, the, the first two projects are part of the capital improvement, because I understand that we've been working on for years here. So it's kind of exciting to wrap those up and have the bids in place and accept them. The keying will be a district-wide project, so it takes quite a bit of work and time. I don't know if you want to speak anymore to that or.
Increase security too.
Yes, exactly.
Increase security, a lot of keys around and so.
Better say what we're doing.
The keying is, we're gonna rekey all the different locks and all, all the doors and then also the doors in the classrooms. Instead of, sometimes the teachers will have to reach outside the door and then lock it. We're gonna make sure that teachers can all lock the doors from the inside of the classroom rather than the outside. So all the, all the locks will be on the same master. And you can tweak the master too. So I can have a whole master, then the high school principals can have a key for their building, the middle school principal can have a key for their building and so on. And I can get into all of them.
One thing we didn't talk about this morning was, I assume there's some kind of protocol for checking keys, making sure we have control, plate control on keys, let out keys returned.
Yeah, carrying, well, from what they've done with me anyways, when I go in there and I need to get a key to go somewhere, there's an extensive checkout list that I have to sign in and sign out and then make sure I return that key. So yeah, there is a protocol for that. I just think that some of the locks are so old, we, we can't guarantee that they're all back in because of that list. So I think this is a new way of making sure that the building's secure.
Yeah, what did that, what did that cost? Can we say that?
A whole bunch, two hundred and thirty-five thou, yeah, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
So it's no small deal.
And part of it's with the bond that you passed a few years ago.
Any other questions or comments on any of the items in front of us this evening?
I'd like to comment on item number C, asbestos removal. I voted against this in the finance committee. Again, you know, this is removal and I, I, my belief is of, of basically watch maintaining it and encapsulate it. Instead of a full removal, then you still have to put tile over it. But for many, many years, asbestos, they spent billions and billions of dollars removing asbestos. And it's been proven that you really don't have to spend that kind of money. Maintain it, you watch it. And then if there's any danger or any kind of loose fibers, then you get a crew there that's licensed for it and to remove it. But there are processes out there where you can encapsulate it without removal. But I'll be voting against item number C. I'll vote for the other two.
We have one motion, so you'd have to make an amendment.
I made an amendment.
To, to remove it.
Uh, like make an amendment to break out C.
Okay, I'll second that amendment. It's fair to let you vote individually on that. So we have a motion and a second to amend the original motion, which looks at items A, B, and C. What is the motion? Do you want to remove it for a separate vote?
Yeah, just separate vote, that's it.
So we'll just remove it from the original action? So the motion in front of us is just to remove item eight B, one C from the original motion. Any discussion on that amendment? So this is, we're gonna vote on that as well, just, just to give it a separate action so that Mr. Olson can express that as well. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none?
Yeah, debates, but just the wording of it.
Just the wording, thank you. So all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, okay. So right now. Motion carries. Okay, so right now, we're just looking at items A and B, we'll come back to C in just a second then. So are there any further discussions on items eight, B, one, A and B?
Uh, B, they've got city approval for variance, just to let you know, it went through the city council. It's an informational item that was approved.
And the bid is going to a local company?
Uh, MedCon.
Excellent.
MedCon, yes.
Nice when you can do that, we don't have much control over it, so it's not something that happens. Any further discussion on those items? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This brings us to item eight, B one C, the asbestos removal, which we just removed from the, the previous motion. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
And, and a second. We have a motion and a second, and now we'll open up discussion for, for a good discussion on, on this item.
Mister Chair, the amount that's being requested, just to clarify, is twenty-one thousand nine hundred seventy-five. It's the lowest bid by Environmental Plant Services, and it's for a floor area. So I guess there was some discussion about whether that could be encapsulated theoretically, but probably the best alternative recommended by Kevin was to remove it.
How large of an area are we talking about?
Second floor of Jefferson.
Is this the entire second floor?
I guess so.
So the tiling is all asbestos-based tiling, is that what it is?
They're saying it's friable right now, usually it's not. It's actually, it's, it's sealed, fibers are not friable, but they're saying that, you know, it's, I don't know if any testing's been done, but usually asbestos tile, I know when I work on projects, I say, don't remove it, don't touch it, cover it, encapsulate it. No one can sand on it or anything. Please don't sand asbestos tile. Plus, it's also not in this cost, then they have to put new flooring down. So whatever they, did they?
It's about twenty-five thousand for new flooring.
Tile?
Yep. So it'd be the twenty-one thousand for the removal, which is on the health and safety level, and the twenty-five thousand, that would be out of operating cap of replacing.
Chief Chair, go ahead.
As a health professional, I, asbestos removal is the only way to go. Only, only way to go.
As a certified building official, no. Do we just flip a coin?
No, I just had to put my two cents in from a, from a health professional.
That there'd be liability.
Well, we didn't, correct.
We discussed this quite a bit at the meeting this morning, and there was the feeling of the rest of the finance committee that rather than put tile over asbestos tile, that we take the tile out. And we did have some discussion maybe about having Kevin come to a work session or sometime and just describe for us what the asbestos removal plan was in our buildings. But it's my understanding, our goal is to try to be asbestos-free in our buildings. So I will vote in favor of, of removing it.
As a Jefferson parent, I would prefer to go to the next PTO meeting, talking about how we're moving asbestos versus leaving the building also.
That was another concern, was the perception appearance that we had, so.
I want to make sure that we're being clear, that we're not short shrifting safety in the building, so. So that'll be my, my vote on this item. Any further discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
And the motion is, want to read it for us?
Uh, the motion is to approve Jefferson Elementary School asbestos removal bid from Environmental Plant Services.
Mister Chairman, I will vote aye. Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jay Robeshow? And Chairman Ingrid?
Aye.
Mister Chairman, it is five in favor, one against.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. We have a few items we're skipping over that have been moved to the, the next agenda. And so this brings us to item eight, B five, approve addition of special education paraprofessional positions. Mister Sesker, if you want to talk us through that.
Yeah, and actually the finance committee looked at those positions too. I might have Cheryl come and visit a little bit about those pieces. And I also sent you an email that had the financial piece of it too, so you saw the cost for the remainder of these year, for the remainder of the year for the, for the paraprofessional addition.
Good evening. Yes, excuse me. I am cold. There are two additional positions. We have new students that moved into the district with some significant needs and the need for additional services for them based on their IEPs. And that's until the end of the year, and then we'll recalculate and look at what our needs are for next year and look at the ongoing needs for students.
Any questions for Cheryl on this item?
What is the cost of this?
It's about, um.
Fifty-six hundred dollars.
Yeah, fifty-six hundred dollars.
For, what are we getting for it?
Two paraprofessionals in separate buildings.
How many hours a day?
Seven.
One in the crack for seven hours a day, and one in McKinley for two and a half hours a day, Monday through Thursday. For a total cost.
Oh, so the, the, very.
That's what I was listening here.
The McKinley one would be only a point five, or half, halftime.
A halftime position.
Half day, four days.
So a halftime position. So the seven hours a day at the crack is a, is roughly forty-eight hundred. The two and a half hours from Monday through Thursday is roughly eight hundred fifty-dollar expense, so total, I think you said fifty-six hundred.
That was in the email, Howard, it wasn't on, I, what did we?
It's here, tell me, agenda.
Oh, it is on.
Well, and I just, we didn't discuss it this morning, so that was why I'm a little bit off at lunch on this one.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions on this item?
What's reimbursable from the state in effect on these costs?
Uh, sixty-eight percent.
Sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight percent? Yeah, I just point out again, it's one of the advantages of public education, is that we educate all comers.
That's right.
And it cost us some money in cases like this, but somebody needs to do it, and we're the, we're the people that do it in our public school system, so.
Exactly.
This is a time when we'll, I'll vote yes for it, but you know, you always cringe a little bit at the cost of these things, but yet it's important.
Any further discussion on this item?
Isn't it true that we have IEP, we have no choice?
Correct.
It's another point.
Well, we do have a choice, but it could be more costly.
It could be more costly.
That is what?
Set them out.
You could argue with a parent about having that, and they could take you to a due process here.
Oh.
I favor the first option.
I agree. All right, any further questions on this item? Hearing none, I don't think we have a motion to approve yet, right? So I'll entertain a motion to approve the addition of special education paraprofessional positions. So a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um, okay, uh, next up is the approval of high school FTEs and staffing for the twenty thou- two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen academic school year. Uh, Mister Sesker, you want to introduce this a little bit?
Sure, I can summarize the process, and then you guys can fill in the details as we go through it. But we're staying within the parameters of the levy dollars. One of the goals of the levy was to make sure we reduce class sizes, and when Lyle, Mister Turtle, and Mister Bente presented it, the curriculum committee and the finance committee, we looked at the numbers for, in this case, the language, or the, yeah, the language arts, and the, language arts, yeah, language arts and the foreign language departments, and they were too high. So we would like to utilize the FTEs designated in the levy to support hiring a language arts teacher and a foreign language teacher to reduce those class sizes, which are, are pretty high due to, and we didn't know this, hindsight's everything, when the registration came out, we found that these numbers were a lot higher than we anticipated. We also know, because of the eighth graders coming in and the seniors going out, that we're going to have over fifty new kids coming into the high school, which also, I mean, we sort of looked at it, but it's never really real until you actually get the registration numbers that are, that are in there. And you could, we could lose a few, we could gain a few too by, by next year. So that is, was the discussion at the curriculum committee, the discussion at the finance committee, and both those committees approved it, and are suggesting that the board prove it as well.
Any further discussion on these items?
Now, this is only a one-year fix.
That's correct.
One-year fix.
Yep, the idea is that we, because we do have still, we want to investigate the vocational program and the service learning coordinator and work with the chamber, and so the idea is by, actually, it's not even that, it's, we want to make sure that we have, take it back to staffing before the entire year, but we want to make sure that we have a plan in place by December, so that when registration occurs in January, kids can register for those vocational programs. So, yes, in a sense, it's for a year.
I think it's important to highlight those, because those are things we talked about at the, with the levy, those two items, and, and on my discussion at the curriculum committee and the, the work session of the board, what the reading I got from both of those groups was that we're really committed to filling those positions, and so, um, those will happen, and so, uh, that will require some adjustments to some staffing in the future. Depending upon budgetary constraints at that time, but those are very important positions that, that, that board was committed to making sure we'd realize within the next year.
Yep, and examples of those would be positions in manufacturing, engineering, technology, it could be agriculture, it could be a, a bunch of different areas that we have, but the idea is that we could possibly get anywhere between five and ten new electives for our students to choose from next year.
Specifically in math and rural languages, where would those, that one FTE go?
I'm going to have Mister Turtle come up and help me out with this, because he's gone through it about three or four times, but, and so he knows, and Jamie can also help him.
Good evening, Board. Right now, the plan is if, if I receive two FTEs tonight, one would go to hiring a new Spanish teacher. Our numbers are very high in Spanish, which is a good thing, I mean, that was one of the things that we have worked very hard on the last four or five years, to get those numbers up and, and give more options for our kids in Spanish, which includes a Spanish four in college credit course. The other FTE I really want to have, I want to keep the class sizes at a more reasonable level in the language arts department. We're always concerned about our reading scores, but just the overall, general condition of the curriculum in, in English. We did put an FTE in math, and we also put one in.
Social studies.
Social studies, which the numbers were also very, very high. Because we have been tight on money over the last few years, so our, our base numbers were really high to start with. But my Spanish area is really a, a big concern to me. And with the levy passing and parents expecting that, you know, kids are going to get the courses that they registered for, I want to make sure we have space for them.
As far as the math goes, what discipline are you looking at, Mister Turtle, where that one FTE would go in math?
Well, there's one, right now, we were, we got two out of the levy to start with, so one went to math, one went to social studies, and the two we're talking about tonight, one would go to language arts and one would go to Spanish.
I understand that. Would it be an algebra teacher, a higher algebra teacher, advanced math?
It would be, it would be spread out over a number of areas, Jerry, just let me look here.
Yeah, so I can refer to that in here, the, it's pretty clearly laid out, it's a wide variety of courses, so there's an, the number of sections of intermediate algebra go up by one, geometry standards goes up by one section, I don't know what ACC Algebra II is, uh.
Accelerated Algebra II.
Accelerated Algebra II goes up by one section, trigon precalculus go up by one section.
Do you know what the JAB posting will look like? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's sort of roughly how it's spreading out.
What we're concerned about, Jerry, in math, is for example, you got it at geometry standards, I've got four sections now, we need five. Geometry standards is a, a class where kids that are struggling in geometry need more help, so we're trying to bolster those areas where kids need more help in math. So we, th- those decisions are made with the department. I have my department heads very involved in the decision-making about where we put our FTE in the department. They best know, and I work close enough with all of them, that we work those things out so that we do what's best for kids.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item?
I think it is worth mentioning that the class sizes that we're looking at, if we don't add it, are in the thirties.
Yeah, they're not, there's some areas that are just not doable, I mean, it's going to be very, very difficult if we don't do this.
Well, they're in the upper thirties and some even forties.
Yeah, some are a lot higher, yes.
And we still have classes that are going to be thirty-four, thirty-seven in some subjects.
Yeah, it's still.
There's a few struggles, and, you know, I'm looking at calculus, where there's thirty-four students in that sort of, there's only one section of it though, so it's split it up, it's difficult.
If, if you approve this tonight, one of the things we'll do is go back with the department heads and relook at everything again and move things where it is best that we can figure out, so that it's in the best interest of kids and where we need. They, they staff, for example, in math or language arts, they know where we need to put FTE.
So for the motion, Lyle, would you like it to read one point O language arts and one point O foreign language?
That'd be fine.
You want to be that specific?
Or just?
Don't have to, no.
Or just two more FTE, two FTEs?
I'm just telling you, as a board, in all honesty, that's where they will go.
Okay.
Yeah. We have this down to a tight science, so we, we know real close where we got it.
It'll rain a lot today too, so.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So what's the suggestion for the motion then?
I'll leave it open.
I would, yeah.
The additional two point O FTEs at the high school.
So they can react if they need to.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion as such.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second, uh, to, for an additional two FTEs at the high school. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Um, next up, item number s- uh, eight B seven, approved summer band camp and summer orchestra camp. Mister Sesker, do you maybe want to talk us through that a little bit, and then we'll?
I can, and the finance committee helped me out to fill in the blanks.
This was a very long discussion.
Yeah, it was longer. We currently have summer band camp and orchestra camp occurring in the district, and we would like to make it a little bit more formal, where we have an exact accounting piece for the finances and then an HR piece for the hiring of the staff that are going to be teaching these particular areas in music. So, well, we, we were, there are two really choices of making sure that we have the, the accounting piece there, and one choice was to go through the community education program, and the other choice was to go through the general fund. The community education program, we would charge students a fee. We have approximately a hundred twenty students sign up for summer band camp this summer, so theoretically, we would charge each of those students a sixty-dollar fee. And then based on the fees collected, we would disperse the dollars for the director, the, and all the other specialty, specialty areas. And then, and then the idea would be is that based on the number of fees, the program would break even, because in community ed you can't go into the negative amount. The other option would be to go through the general fund, where we would be strict on how we do the hiring, we go through our HR director to make sure that the hiring process is consistent with what we do with all other staff, so we don't have any sort of equity issues. And then the finances would go through our finance director, collecting, well, actually, no fees in this case, but making sure that the expenses are accounted for in a responsible way for the district, so we know exactly what's happening. The finance committee chose to go with the general fund, and as a result of going through the general fund, it'd be a, for the, for the band program, it'd be about a seven thousand dollar bill that the district would have to pick up. And then for the orchestra program, do you remember what the total would be?
Five thousand total.
Seven thousand total.
Five, uh, twelve, twelve total.
So twelve, five thousand for the orchestra program. So the, the cost for the two programs together, for the summer band and summer orchestra program, if you go through the general fund, and that's where you want to choose, would be a cost to the district of about twelve thousand dollars. And, you know, one of the things that we talked about too at our earlier finance committee meetings was our fund balance, and we have a very large fund. you know, one of the things that we talked about too at our earlier finance committee meetings was our fund balance, and we have a very large fund balance, and to me, this would be a a real good solution to spend a little bit of that money, although in the scheme of things, twelve thousand dollars compared to seven million dollars is not a lot of money. But um we would also like to monitor this for two years to make sure we're looking at the finances to see whether or not we are spending more than what we should, and we also wanna look at the participation, because one of the things that we should be doing is encouraging kids to get more active in music, and we don't want to go the other direction and start limiting kids to music, and I think that's the reason why the the finance committee went with the no fees for this program, so. Um, go ahead and fill in the blanks, that's a real, real general summary of what we talked about in finance.
And I appreciate uh your discussion from the financial standpoint, but what are the advantages programmatically? Um, being able to have this set through the general fund where we obviously would have more of an opportunity to monitor participation, but is there a stronger articulation between our programs during the academic year also?
There was, that was discussed too.
Okay.
Yep, and.
So you thought that it would improve the retention of band and orchestra members and you'd have full participation by all the people that are, the kids that are interested. We support a lot of them with scholarships, some kids don't even sign up because of the fee and so, you know, they're not, they're behind already when they start in um the classroom and so then they end up losing kids because they never catch up, because they weren't able to participate in camp, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Kunkel and and Ms. Olson did a nice job of presenting the advantages of band.
Thank you.
This is for fifth graders and uh one of the things we were told is that if they don't go to band camp, it's really tough for them when they come to get in the sixth grade band and
Right, and so we lose it.
And uh, yeah, get my grades right here, but uh uh the other thing was, we have no hardly any diversity and uh we felt that we'd like to encourage more people to try band, and maybe some of them will catch and it'd be a a great experience for them and offer them some opportunity that they wouldn't otherwise have. And if we charge fees, there were only thirty percent of the students paying fees, seventy percent worked, and we didn't think that was quite equitable. And and by and larger, it was just to encourage more participation in our music program at an early age and make it cost affordable. One reason being, they also have to buy instruments. So, many parents still have other expenses besides the fees, so it made sense to uh spend our twelve thousand dollars a year and take it out of our general fund, I think it was a good investment for us.
Yes. Any further discussion on this item?
I I can just make a personal note that my son did this and it really jumpstarted his band career. And I do know that uh way back when he was um in that ages, they used the kids to come back. I don't know if they're still doing that, but I know he went back like as an eighth grader to help with band camp. So that improved his ability once again, as well as helping kids younger than him um start up, and I I don't know if Mr. Kunkel still does that or not, but it made a big difference in his life to to have that added boost.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Third.
I'll let Kathy sort that out.
Uh, we have a sec, mo- a motion in a second to approve uh the summer band camp and summer orchestra camp, um any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
I will vote yes, Deb Davis.
Yes.
Yvette Martholler.
Yes.
Richard Olson.
Yes.
Jerry Robisho.
Yes.
And Chairman Ingraham.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, six in favors, there are all against.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Um, next up, uh approval of the addition of home connection cultural liaison position. Uh, Mr. Sesker, would you please uh give us a little background on that item?
I will, and then I'll lean a little bit on probably Anne Marie if I need to fill in some of the blanks or, yeah, other questions about it, but this position is to, it was actually a grant, I I believe that both, did you and Marie and, or was just Clean Card Noodle had written, this will last through June thirtieth of this year, and it'll allow us to, it's a, it's a grant to allow us to hire two folks to go into the homes of uh students who are considered refugees by definition and be able to read to them and actually offer them books. Uh, the refugee grant will also allow these two individuals that we're going to hire, and we do have a couple in mind, to help us with our summer STEAM program too, and so they'll be able to work with students that are struggling with language and academics um during our summer STEAM program. So it's a grant and it'll go through June thirtieth of this year and they'll have to rewrite the grant, I suppose, for the following year if they decide to do it again.
They'd also be able to use some work with the parents, if there was communication between principals and the parents, they could also support that or help with that as well.
Yeah, the idea would be we'd hire somebody who can speak Somali and um and be able to integrate them within the program.
We just hired an English language coordinator, is this under him?
I, you know, that's a good question, I don't think so, I think this is just a separate refugee grant. I think though, moving into the future, I think that that piece would probably gradually go over to that person. That'd be my suggestion, but right now we don't have him in place. Right, so he'd have.
This will be done before he's on the board, so that. I think, no, it's safe to say, he won't be supervising this.
But next year he'll be.
But in the future, that would certainly seem to make sense, yeah. All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the addition of the home connection cultural liaison position.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, a motion in a second?
Got a thirty, yeah.
I'm gonna let Kathy sort that out. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you all. Um, item eight B nine, approved special services comp worth pay increase. Uh, Mr. Sesker, would you like to tell us a little bit about that?
Sure, we have been working with Northfield Public Schools and uh last year, we worked out an agreement to share Cheryl Hall and uh who's been working out very well for us. We uh have gone through almost our first entire year of having that shared relationship with the director. And um we went back to analyze the pay equity and the comparable worth with the current job. As you know, Cheryl was being paid a certain dollar amount, we didn't change that when we shared with Northfield, and now that she has twice as many staff to supervise and probably about twice as many students, the points for the comparable worth study actually increased, and the dollar amount was eleven thousand six hundred, eleven thousand six hundred dollars, which we would split with Northfield. So, again, the total dollar amount, whatever that total dollar amount would be, is split with Northfield and with with comparable. So it's still a very good financial deal for us and we still gotta keep a very quality person.
And we have some legal re- requirements to have comparative worth.
We do.
Pay.
Yep. And we've done a, I think, I, Nicole's done a great job of keeping us in line with the comparable worth to make sure that we are not out of compliance with that, so.
And you, there's gonna be, Howard brought this up, gonna be a review?
Yes.
In December, maybe you can explain that to?
Yep, yep, but we meet each month with Dr. Richardson from Northfield, the superintendent of Northfield, Cheryl Hall and I, and we meet on a monthly basis to just make sure that um first of all Cheryl gets the support that she needs and that we, if we do hear of any things that we need to adjust, we make sure we communicate that to her too. So, I sent out uh some notes out to staff and kind of like a three sixty evaluation trial thing for the first year, and we continue to talk about what we're um doing in our special education department. If there are little things like communication, well, it can be a little thing, it can be a large thing, but communication right now has not been an issue um with parents and things like that, then we would talk to Cheryl about that within both districts, but we're gonna do the same thing again, probably a little bit more formal, um because we wanna get Cheryl at least a year up sharing both districts to get her feet wet, and then do a formal evaluation in um November, December, and then at that time, both districts will give a recommendation of whether or not we continue the shared directorship. So it gives us two years of good data to make sure that we're, we're doing the right thing.
All right, thank you very much.
Just a question, and I noticed that uh Springstead does a comparable worth study, so we have an objective organization doing that, it's not internally been done.
That's correct.
Which is great.
Yep, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Uh, hearing none, I don't think we have a motion in a second at this time, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the special services comp worth pay increase.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you all. Um, next up, item eight uh C enrollment uh report. Um, I remember C to be holding quite steady uh for this time of year. Um, any questions or comments on the enrollment report? All right. Uh, hearing none, uh moving on to the financial report you have in front of you.
I get that already, so.
Any further questions about?
We have a positive.
The financial report.
We have a positive, check's a bell, so it's a good news.
Okay. I'll assume that Mr. Rocha's gulping it. Had to do with this technology and not the financial report.
I'm touching the wrong thing on my keyboard here.
We'll make sure that we stipulate that, it's not related to the financial report.
No offense, please.
All right, no question?
Mr. Oh, Mr. Tree, yeah, they're going to, for our benefit, they are going to um what, bolt it up or square some critical figures?
Yeah, so.
That we should look at, but you can explain that a little bit better.
Yep. So if you look at, if you have it up on your machine, um there are the two columns, actually there's four columns that we're gonna highlight. And again, this is like your cash flow checkbook right now, and we're just gonna monitor it all the way through the year, so if there are any changes, we know exactly where they are at. So fiscal year thirteen, year to date through March two thousand thirteen, and fiscal year fourteen, year to date through March two thousand fourteen. Um, we wanna make sure we take a look at those two on the revenues and those two on the expenditures, so if you look at the March two thousand fourteen revenue versus the expenditures, we are still ahead. All right, that's kinda like the cash flow, and then as we go through it, if you look at the budget amount, we're still on track with the budget as well, and that's like the, well, fiscal year fourteen, looking at the budgets comparing, we're still looking, all right. But I'll caution you, it's the, it's kind of cash flow, and remember in June, we send out all the checks to the staff for paychecks through August, they do the twelve month thing, so you're gonna, it's just gonna change a little bit when you get to June. But the idea is hopefully that we're gonna try to balance the checkbook to get it there. And then think theoretically, if the checkbooks balance through June thirtieth after all these adjustments, we should be, you should have a better idea what the audit's gonna be looking like. So we'll emphasize those areas by boxing them and and either putting them in a different color or or bolding.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the uh financial report or comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item eight C three, uh considerable approval of gifts and donations. Um, we have two donations this evening, um uh one, an anonymous, uh an anonymous donation in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, it was a donation for teacher Cora Morris's uh Federal High School VCD Special Education Classroom to purchase, purchase books. Um, and uh item two, uh parents who attended McKinley Early Childhood Gym Re in the amount of uh that seven dollars and twelve cents, a donation towards some co- uh costs uh for that event. We thank everyone who uh makes contributions to the to the district, um and with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, the motion is approved, thank you very much. Uh, and this brings us to item nine, other committee reports, uh uh we had a meeting of the insurance committee, is there a report on that?
Yes.
Mr. Olson, would you like to take that?
Uh, let's see, of course, being insurance, extremely complicated, right, Colleen? Uh, I believe the rate increase is ten point six.
Eleven.
What?
Eleven.
Oh, went up again?
No.
No, it was always eleven? Okay, it's it's even worse than, eh, so that's gonna be, and we got a fairly healthy staff.
I would be glad, uh, correlation.
Okay, all that would seem to be, and the, some information I got, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Colleen, is that of the Af- Affordable Care Act, its costed as one point seven percent. That's a figure that was given to me at the meeting.
For the fees?
Yeah, there's, that's the cost of, you know, from before there was the ACA to now. Could you clarify that?
I don't have the exact percent with me, I know that we are going to have to pay some fees come July first to, for ACA. It's so much per policy or per insured life, but I don't have that exact number with me.
But that's what?
I think we figured it out to be, oh gosh, I hate to even throw a number out because I don't trust my memory on it, but it's not insignificant, that's for sure.
What do we get for it?
Nothing.
Well, now there are about nine million people getting insurance now, it's really sleek at it, so.
So hopefully what happens is that everyone has health insurance and that the cost of healthcare goes down because now you're not paying for uninsured people who go to the doctor and the hospitals and I guess that's the big picture, right?
Is that included in the ten or eleven percent?
No, that is not.
Yeah, correct me, I'm sorry.
So the, the fee that, yeah, the fee.
Eleven point six percent.
Yes, eleven point six, we actually deserved a twenty-two point seven percent increase in our health rates, but because we're a member of a pool, we got an eleven point six, so being a member of the pool helps buy down that increase. Um, but the fee that we'll have to pay come July first is something that we actually write a check for, it doesn't really have anything to do with our health insurance rate increase.
How, how much can we, you know, if it goes up eleven point six percent, it'd be, it's cumulative like a bank account, I mean, how much can we take?
I think we're already past that limit.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, it's been doing that for twenty years.
That number is not unusually high, which is a shame.
That's the committee report.
Any questions on that report? Right, hearing none, uh there was a wellness committee meeting on April second, is there a report?
Okay, I've got two things to say, one is student related and one is employee related, so the student related one is we had a very successful health fair at the middle school. Uh, we had vendors from Riverbend, District One, Sedexo, Health Finders, Mental Health Collective, the stops troupe, which is our students um performing on tough situation, I'm sorry, it's our spots group. Youth Development, our district wellness team, um kinda all pitched in, the FIAD teachers were there, and it was very successful, there were kind of mass um med- meditation sessions, so with sixth through and seventh and eighth graders, that was quite a challenge, but I did see the sixth graders performing very well, behaving well and soaking it all in, so it was a great day. Uh, also on the student related, I'm sorry, on the employee related piece, we've had a employee wellness program happening for a few months and a hundred and eleven or a little bit over a hundred people have, um employees in the district have taken advantage of kind of a reimbursement for purchasing something fitness or health related, so that's gone over really well, the deadline is mail, May fifteenth, so we'll see if more people take advantage of that. So we feel like that's a success, yes.
Is that your new program?
It is.
Something you did?
Well, it's something that our whole wellness, district wellness team did, so, yes. I can't take it, I can't take credit for it.
So, for example, uh, what do we offer?
Yes, so Riverbend Nature Center uh membership, so you get twenty dollars towards that, um a pair of running shoes or walking shoes, uh gym membership, so any of those kinds of, yep. Thank you. That's it for wellness.
That's it for wellness, okay. Anne Marie does not get to sit down, because next up is the community ed report.
Great, lots. Great, lots of good things going on in community ed, one of the things that I wanna highlight, of course, is our partnership, our continued partnership with South Central College. Uh, the Office of Higher Ed just awarded South Central a grant, um, it is the Intervention for College Access Program, or the ICAP Grant. This will help, um, Faribault Public Schools provide for struggling, um, students that are having problems with the, passing the MCAs, that are going in their junior and seniors' years. Uh, we will have a career exploration time for them this summer, so our youth development coordinator is, um, and, and others, our Heidi is back there in the audience, and she's helping with this too. Helping to recruit students to fill that, fill those spots in terms of the career exploration. Then, with South Central's help, we will be offering, uh, through our College Ambition Starts Today Program, a first year experience, one credit, one college credit, uh, through CAST for the students. And that is to help understand how to navigate post-secondary and fill out financial aid forms and all of those good things. Life Online, what is it like to be a post-secondary student? Uh, we'll be offering math and reading and embedding South Central College's curriculum, college readiness curriculum, into the ALC classes after school. So that's gonna happen, and I'm hoping that, um, that's kind of takes up all of the, all of the funding that's been provided. We get about nine thousand out of the twenty-five thousand to do this, to coordinate on our end. Um, but I'm hoping that, uh, the superintendent has expressed a number of times that we really have some sort of healthcare or manufacturing hands-on experience, and I'm hoping we will be able to find funds to do that the following summer with those students. So that and the McKinley springling, just springling, I keep wanting to say springling fling or something like that, but it's just springling happened on Friday night. I was there for a while, uh, huge turnout, great fun activities, there were baby ducks, baby chickens, a calf, police, all sorts of fun things that, um, the kids enjoyed, and also, I guess I did too a little bit, so.
With the list, something doesn't belong?
So that, so.
Yep.
Yeah, so that, it was really fun. And that's it, any questions?
Any questions on that? Thank you very much, Anne Marie. Okay, and this brings us to item ten, other matters, uh, beginning with item is ten A, designate two district voting members for the soccer committee. Uh, so you may remember from our discussion at the, um, work session, uh, that the school district, there's a soccer committee that overlooks the, um, the ball, what's the name, official name of that field?
Ball field.
Ball field.
Yep.
Um, uh, and, uh, um, the district has only allowed two voting members on that committee, but we currently have voting members on that committee. Um, so we need to designate which of those, uh, four members are voting members. Um, and so, uh, at our last meeting, there was a feeling that perhaps this should be, we have two staff members and two board members on that committee. Uh, the feeling might be that one of them should be a staff member and one would be a board member, did we get any clarification on which staff member might be the best choice there?
We talked about it, and we thought we just, um, we just would like to keep it general, just say one board member votes and one staff member votes, um, and then that way if, if Ken happens, if it happens to be something with scheduling and Ken could vote, and it happens to be something with facilities and Kevin could vote.
Do we know that that's okay?
We don't know that yet, but.
Well, we'll give it a shot and see what they come back with.
Yeah.
All right, Dr. Tru next, I'll ask him what he thinks of that.
All right.
I'm perfectly fine with that.
If, if not, then I think we talked about, if they want more specifically, we'd have Mr. Olson be the board representative and, uh, Mr. Hildebrand being the, the staff representative.
Well, I'm happy to entertain a motion that, um, um, at any soccer committee meeting, uh, uh, one staff member from the district and one board member from the district are able to vote, uh, without designating who that would be. So I'll entertain a motion to that effect at this time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion and a second, for such a, all right, for such a motion, uh, uh, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, um. Uh, okay, items ten B and ten C have already been acted upon, so this brings us to item ten D, consider approval of resolution, Resolution fourteen oh five, placing probationary staff on non-renewal status. Uh, reminding Mr. Sesker, I think we took some preliminary action on this last month, is that right?
Yeah, these are, yeah, this is the second, yeah.
This is the next step in that process?
This is like the second wave of staff that we have after evasion, so these are new staff.
Okay, so these are additional staff in the same process, okay. All right, now I understand. Okay, any discussion on this item? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Resolution fourteen oh five, placing probationary staff on non-renewal status. Uh, any further discussion? This is a resolution and therefore, uh, requires a roll call, so Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
I will vote aye, Deb Davis.
Aye.
Yvette Martholler.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Chair Robichaud.
Aye.
Chairman Ingraham.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman Six Zero in favor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Uh, next up is item, uh, ten E, consider approval of the memorandum of understanding between ISD six five six and the Faribault Education Association. Mr. Sesker, would you like to tell us a little bit about what this, uh, the reasoning behind this, uh, memorandum of understanding?
Yeah, I'll give you the rationale, then if you need to have, um, Michelle come, come up here and explain it, feel free to ask her to come up, but basically, we have done this in the past where we have a, a staff or we have, may have more staff members that would be eligible for retiring in the middle of the school year, and what we'd like to do is to give them the opportunity to take this leave and then, uh, not have to worry about a staff member retiring in the middle of the year where we have to go out and look for, for folks for that teaching position, it's not good for the students. And it's really difficult to hire staff in, when the school year has already started. So what this would allow us to do is, um, assuming the staff or whatever staff member decides to take advantage of this, we would then advertise now to hire that position for next fall. And then that staff person would be on leave. So that's the theory behind it, and we've done this in the past.
So if I understand you correctly, the, the benefit for the school district is that, uh, we don't need to pay this teacher's salary for that partial year, the, the retiring teacher's salary, they're, because they're on leave. Uh, and we don't have to replace that teacher in the middle of the year. The benefit for the employees is that they, uh, protect all the retirement benefits and such of being on leave.
I think though, if you wanna get, maybe Nicole, you can come up and just talk real specifically about the cost, just so you know exactly what the cost would be for the employee that would be taking the leave, so you know that that detail.
I guess this would be September was, but the actual retirement would be very, end of September, so that's why.
Right, right, very early on in the school years, my understanding.
Right, right, right.
Rule of ninety, I think, right, is that it kicks in, the rule of ninety at September coming up?
Yeah.
Yes, for one individual in particular that we are, um, aware of that potentially will take advantage of this leave, yes, that is true. Um, some, going back to some of the costs that are associated with it, um, while they're on leave, they, they, um, the, the thought is that they still need to get service credit potentially to get to their rule of nineties, that they are eligible to retire from, um, the district. And so what we do then is we pay the equivalent of their TRA into their, uh, health retirement account, and then they turn around and take, take those funds and turn them, pay them towards their TRA benefits. So they're still getting their service credit so that, so that they can still retire and reach the rule of ninety. Um, the other benefit that they do get while they're out on this leave is we'll pay four hundred dollars a month towards their health insurance. So those are two costs that are associated with them taking this leave.
Would that be roughly equivalent, uh, uh, or is there, uh, a significant gain or loss, uh, or how do I say this? When we hire a new staff member, typically they're lower, uh, in the, in the pay scales than a retiring staff member, so there's a significant salary difference there. Uh, is, is that salary difference roughly comparable to the, the cost that we're discussing here to make it financially comparable?
Most, most times the salary is significantly less.
Yeah.
Um, most times. If it's a difficult position to fill or, um, something that's really specialized, then the savings is not always there, but most times there is a significant savings in hiring, um, a much younger teacher or a, one with less experience than our seasoned staff.
So those costs could be, well, well, at least would be somewhat offset probably by the, the hiring of new staff member and, and additionally, we don't need to replace a staff member in the middle of the year, which just doesn't serve our students very well, so. That's the idea behind this. Any other questions on this item?
So all part-time provisions are deleted?
That's correct.
And what's the difference between this and the extended five-year leave of absence permissible in statute?
This leave would run concurrent with the three to five years statutory leave option. Um, TRA says that when we, when we allow a three to five year leave of absence, we can't limit it, limit it to less than three years. So this leave says that they can be out for three years, and during that time, we will pay their health insurance and their TRA equivalent to their health retirement account, um, for one year. So that's, um, protecting us and tightening it up. So it's, it runs concurrent with the statutory leave, but it also adds a little bit more of a financial benefit to the employee.
Actually an incentive too, because the, if the employee retires, they get the insurance contribution till they reach Medicare eligibility. So if they continue to stay on leave, they not only don't get the salary, but now after one year's, they don't get the benefit of having the, the contribution that is already in the contract. So it was a piece at both the union and HR P two.
All right, any further questions on this item? I don't believe we have a motion or a second, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve memorandum of understanding between ISD six five six and Faribault Education Association.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you all. Uh, last on item ten, uh, is item ten F, consider approval of the Resolution fourteen oh seven for the twenty fourteen fifteen membership with Minnesota State High School League. And I don't think there's any surprises here, this is something we do every year for our students to participate in, in, uh, the host of sporting activities that, uh, uh, they do in the district.
So moved.
You have a motion, is there a second? A motion, a second, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, it is a resolution, so it recalls, requires a roll call, Mr. Clerk. Item ten F.
I will vote aye. Deb Davis.
Aye.
Jason, excuse me, Yvette Martholler.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Chair Robichaud.
Aye.
Chairman Ingraham.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman Six Zero in favor.
All right, um, and this brings us then to item eleven, other items of information report, we have no student representative present this evening, any items of information from school board members?
I have two.
Please.
As, as always, band concert, May twelfth at seven PM, it'll be the last one for the year at the high school. And then the choir concert is May twentieth, which is a Tuesday, band ones Monday at seven PM. The last one for them also, for the year.
All right, any other items?
Yes, I had a chance to, uh, attend the C meeting last Thursday, and, um, I would like to ask Kathy to send out the link to the C webpage. Uh, I had a chance to, uh, review that, uh, at the meeting, there's just a, a whale of a lot of information on that webpage. That would be a benefit for board members to access and take a look at. Uh, they, just one example is they did a, a, a real dollar comparison of, I forget the exact year that they went back, but we're actually spending two thousand dollars less per students, um, than we were ten years ago. Uh, so that kind of information is, uh, very valuable for giving updates on the legislature, um, I really encourage you to, um, take a look at that, and if Kathy can send out that link, that would be very beneficial.
Thank you. Any other items of information?
I attended a, a presentation on Common Core about implementation in, in various districts, and I guess the question to Todd, it would be, where are we into that system? And is, is it something we should be doing?
Right now, we're at, uh, it's, um, we're, they require, the state only requires the reading portion of it, so we're, we are in the process of implementing the Common Core reading program. It's part of the world's best workforce piece and part of that whole entire plan. Uh, it might be a good discussion item for the board at the next work session, and then Clean Card Noodle can give you some more details on where she is with the Core components. But we are implementing it, and we are going by the, by the recommendation of the federal government.
And there's, and there's forces out there that are, are against the Common Core standards.
There are, it's, it's a, you know, it's another controversial, it's a no child left behind, Common Core type of federal.
Seems to be growing, uh, and I'm very concerned with that, I'm still trying to gather facts on with the Common Core, if it's something that we should be doing, uh, I talked to a district today that opted out of that which you're allowed to do. And it's, I think it should be something that we should be talking about as a district that, where there's, uh, extensive testing, and it's something that I know Mr. Casper does not like, but this is what I'm getting right now, I, you know, to verify the facts and data mining, exactly what are we gathering on this? Now, this is could be further into the law, but I just wondered if it's something we, we should be doing, cause, uh, I know there's people that could present to the board in about a twenty-minute segment of, uh, is it something we should be doing or not?
Right, and I think, again, Clean Card Noodle could probably do a better job than me presenting all the information, the details about it. Um, and then I think the, the piece or the question that the board has to try to come up with, I guess, or the questions, the best question, I guess, is, is it helping student learning? And how effective is it for certain learning or is it blocking that learning somehow? And Colleen would be the person to ask for that. And then, again, I think at a work session, that'd be a great topic for us to talk about, so not only that, but also to familiarize the board members of what the Common Core even is.
Yeah, with, with Colleen, but I also like to have the other side too, both sides of the issue, and then.
Well, hang on a second, Colleen is both sides of the issue for this district, she's the expert on that district, so it's not a debate between Colleen and somebody else, so, so we'll be a little careful about that.
Yeah, she's.
Well, uh. Well.
We don't even, I think we wanna hear from Colleen first before we decide for any outside perspectives, I think.
We could, we could hear from both people.
Who would you, I guess who would you bring in for the other side, I don't know who the other side would be?
There's the, there's an organization that's, of course, against it, and I would like to least, I've been hurt this person, I've just hurt some other people, they just find out the facts on both sides.
We'll talk about that, I'm, I'm really reluctant to get our district embroiled in a, in a very controversial topic of, of Common Core. I'm happy to have us discuss it, cause I think as board members, when we get asked about it, we should have an answer for what our district is doing, um, but, uh, I'll be cautious about it before I start. I think an assumption that we have a debate between our, our curriculum director and, and some organization against Common Core, uh, it troubles me to say that immediately off the top of my head before Colleen's even had a presentation for us, so.
Could you bring the information, your software to the work session and discuss it?
I would, I'm not re, cause I'm not, you know, fully informed, cause I'd like to bring somebody and, and then let the board decide, ask questions from both sides. But there are, in fact, I think Indiana just voted out.
Yeah, I think, let's get an understanding of what the Common Core is first, and then as we go through the process.
That would be nice, I would agree with that.
Go through that, that meeting.
I would agree with that.
Okay, I have one item of, uh, of information, that is, um, uh, a little while ago, uh, Mr. Sesker, uh, came to me and asked me, uh, told me that he wanted to, uh, recommend, recommend our esteemed, uh, finance director, Colleen Murdistorf, uh, for an award, uh, for the top finance, uh, director in the state.
Hey.
So, um, um, so just to be clear, she didn't win the award.
Applause.
Go to read the call.
People read into what I said, but, but Todd and I, uh, he asked me to write that, I was happy to do so, Todd did as well, um, and, uh, I think those were both very heartfelt letters, uh, of how. those were both very heartfelt letters, uh, of how much we have valued her, um, uh, during her entire time in the district, but in particular the last two years, uh, as we were trying to bring information to the community in light of levies, um, I think it was really, uh, important, um, uh, she was not chosen for the award, but, um, uh, there were quite a few people nominated, but I wanted to make sure that we took a, a moment tonight to, to honor her and let her know that, uh, that we value her work tremendously, and that was a sign of, of that, uh, recommendation, and so, uh, I'm certain we'll be taking another stab at that, and so, we'll see how that goes. Thank you very much, Clean.
Did Clean want to make a statement?
Looks like she does not. Any other items of information? Uh, next up, our superintendent.
Um, just a point of clarification, Deb, on May twelfth, I have it down for six thirty PM, the start of the concert, so let's double check that, do you have it at seven?
I, I checked just before.
And it's at seven?
Seven, yeah, it's always, it's always at seven, but if you go into the, um, um, school calendar and go under activities and bring it up, it says seven.
'Cause I just had a conversation with Pat Uncle after school and he says it's at six thirty, so I'll double check.
Oh, that's the middle school is at six thirty, I believe, not the high school.
Okay, all right, so the middle school starts at six thirty?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, got it, all right.
And that's on, not on the twelfth, though. Give me a second, I'll get you that date.
All right, I didn't mean to confuse everybody, but, take a look at your sca- your calendars for those, those concerts, we wanna, we encourage you to go those. Okay, I have just a couple of things, um, Fairble Falcon Scholarship Fund, again, it's still very active, and we're at that point right now, we're determining scholarships for students, um, I'm gonna give a shameless plug for Rotary and those, uh, tickets for sale, the dollars that we raise, that we raise with these, uh, tickets, these raffle tickets, go directly to the scholarship funds that, uh, not only the Fairble Falcons Fund distributes, but all of our different funds that we have for scholarships for our seniors that are graduating go to. Last year, uh, two years ago, the, um, Rotary raised about twenty thousand dollars as a result of this raffle, but it all goes back to students. Uh, Keith Nord presentation was given a couple of weeks ago, and Keith Nord is a former Viking, and he came to talk to staff and spend a day with students, and I thought that was very good. Been very, very busy with interviews, uh, really not so much me, more Nicole and some of the other staff, but, uh, we've had some very good hires, I feel, and the process that we put into place for our hiring has gone very, very well, and, uh, looking forward to the new staff coming on board July first. Legislative info, I'm glad you brought that up, Jerry, the C is a great place and a resource for you to take a look at what's happening at the Capitol, so after Kathy sends that information out, I would encourage you to tap into that and take a look at some of the legislative updates that are coming. Right now, there, a lot of it's in session, so we don't really know what's happening yet, uh, it'll, you'll, more things will come out as, in probably a couple of weeks. I wouldn't count on the legislative session ending on May nineteenth, I think it's probably gonna go a little bit further, that's my prediction, but we'll see how it goes. That's my prediction. Um, and also, in note, I went to the high school music spam-a-lot, and it was outstanding, and, uh, just, uh, thanks to Paul Johnson, that was his hundredth production at our public school system, so congratulations to him and his staff, and the kids did a great job as usual at that place, so. I also went to the middle school play, Willie Wonka, that was a little bit earlier than that, and, uh, again, that was terrific, so, that's all I have. Oh, one more. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I, we won, that's the one that's actually titled. Uh, recognizing Dr. Annette Parker at South Central College, she is, it's really an honor to be, um, for her to be on the Presidential Committee, President Obama's Federal Advocacy Group for Manufacturing Apprenticeship Programs, and she serves on that with some very big names, including the CEO of Siemens and some others that are on that committee working with President Obama to promote manufacturing, and so congratulations to Dr. Parker for, for that, and of course, all the things that she's done working with our public school system. South Central College has been, and as Anne Marie just noted, has been very collaborative with the public school system and helping us work out some programs that we can coordinate with those folks, and Dr. Parker's been instrumental in that. And now, that's all I have, so thank you.
You reminded me of one thing, that, uh, we didn't, uh, we, the Fairble Boosters wasn't listed as a donor, but they did sponsor that Keith Nord thing, I understand, that was excellent, and I, he was here all day doing workshops, and, uh, he did an excellent program for parents in the evening, I was humbled to attend it, because of the mistakes I found in my parenting years, but, uh, it was, uh, it was a great presentation, and we thank the Fairble Boosters for sponsoring that.
Thank you.
All right, any other items of information? Hearing none, that brings us to item twelve, dates to remember, uh, May fifth, two thousand fourteen, at four thirty PM, uh, will be a curriculum committee meeting in the district office, uh, May fifteenth, May fifth, I'm sorry, two thousand fourteen, uh, at five thirty PM, uh, work session in the district office, May seventh at three thirty PM, the wellness committee meeting in the district office, May twelfth at seven thirty AM, the finance meeting in the district office, May nineteenth, six thirty PM, uh, a regular board meeting, right, uh, in the middle school, I was gonna say here, but it's not here, this room is not available, so we will be meeting in the middle school cafeteria. Thank you all very much, uh, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Served.